The recording of the meeting started. I will welcome everyone virtually to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, February 25th. As we are all aware, now that we're approaching a full year in this mess that is quarantine, this meeting is by remote participation only. Getting through my spiel at the beginning here pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order of last year suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the March 15th, 2020 order imposing limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Norton Town of Norton Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Norton's website, NortonMA.org. To join this meeting, participate the following ways by clicking on the meeting, the Zoom link present on the meeting agenda. You can also join using the Zoom video app using meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a phone dial-in number available on the agenda if you prefer. You may also view the meeting on Norton Cable Access Channel 15 or the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. Again, no in-person attendance of members of the public is being permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to Paul Giuseppi, the town planner, whose email address is posted on the agenda and on the town Norton's website. There are also meeting materials available on the planning board's page. Again, we're doing everything we can to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. And if they were unable to do so, we'll post on the town Norton website an audio, video recording, transcript, or other record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. I would also add that even though we are just on a virtual call here, this is still a public forum, so please treat any comments made either via the meeting itself or in the chat as public record. And if they are relevant to the proceedings, they may be included in the minutes of this meeting itself. So with that said, we do have a quorum of our five board members here. I believe one member said they rejoin late. I'm not sure if we had heard anything from Steve, but he may be.
He just texted he'll be joining in a few minutes.
Okay, so we will have a full house shortly. In terms of getting things started, in terms of planning board business and policies, I don't believe we have anything on the board there unless, Paul, you wanted to make any specific comments about positions for the upcoming election or in terms of anything further or in terms of other decisions that we've had come down? Or do you want to save that for a further point in the agenda?
Maybe we could do that after the public. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but at the end.
Okay. In that case, we do not have any bills in the Dropbox, but we do have two sets of minutes. We have minutes from January 19th and minutes from February 2nd. Does anybody have any comments? We'll take these one at a time on the minutes from January the 19th.
Orin.
Orin, you're muted. You're muted, Orin.
On the highlighted section, the motion, I thought we had added to that that it was subject to conditions to be agreed upon. It's on the approval.
Yeah, I think we did want to approve it subject to conditions. I think it's good to have that in the notes. I agree. Even though we had discussed the conditions ad nauseam, we definitely were approving with conditions. So if we can make that change, that would be good. I don't see any additional comments in the file in Dropbox. Is there anything else that anybody had regarding the meeting minutes of January the 19th?
Motion to approve the minutes for January 19th with that revision.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion.
Second, Ezra Voss.
Thank you, Scott, for the second. Is there any further discussion on these meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll go through the members as I see them in front of me. Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Joe is not here yet. So that takes care of the meeting minutes for January the 19th. We do have one additional set of minutes from our last meeting on February the 2nd. Do we have any comments or edits for the meeting minutes of February the 2nd?
Motion to approve the minutes from February 2nd.
Scott, the second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go again to the members. Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Joe, are you on the line? Is that you?
I'm in the booth, and yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll vote yes. Paul, if you have the ability to edit Joe's name and the Zoom ID with the phone number 6488 at the end, Joe? Okay. Well, that takes care of both of our sets of minutes. So moving on in our agenda, the next item on the agenda is the review of findings and execution of decision for 60 West Main Street, although it's known as the Cumberland Farms project. Paul, if you want to just, yes.
We do have the A and R on here as well.
I went right over that, and I apologize sincerely. So we do have it. My apologies, we have an A and R endorsement for 57 Bay Road, and I see that the applicant is here. So this is for 57 Bay Road. All of our files are listed in the Dropbox. If somebody from the applicant or an engineer would like to speak, whoever wants to raise their hand and go ahead, feel free.
Good evening, folks. I assume I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Broad Merkel, and I'm representing the Listo family this evening. They own the property at 57 Bay Road. They would like to subdivide the property into two lots. It's currently one house lot, and that's why the A and R plan is before you this evening. I'll give you a brief description of what's going on in the lot because it's not obviously at first glance. The land is located off the eastly side of Bay Road across the street from Charlotte Avenue. There is a house already located on 57 Bay Road. It's a, that's a 1.9 acre lot and it conforms to zoning. And the Listos also own a piece of property to the rear of that, which is 1.06 acres. That has no structure on it. We're carving this up into two house lots, so we begin with Lot 1A. We need to create a conforming lot around the existing house. So we ran a perpendicular side lot line from Bay Road, some 53.3 feet off of the northerly side of the house so that it would comply with sideline setback. And we carved out some 80,010 square feet for that lot. This is in our 80 district, so we need at least 80,000 square feet. And that also needs to be upland, which this lot is. It has a shape factor of 17.19, which is less than 22, which means this is a building lot that conforms with your zoning requirements. Then we turned our attention to Lot 2A. When you combine the remaining portion of the front piece and the back piece, you get 49,632 square feet. That's 30,368 square feet short of an 80,000 square foot conforming lot. So what we did was we looked to abutting properties to see if we couldn't join it with another piece of property to bring it to compliance. We found that within a butter off to the north, that would be land owned by Keith Rodeer. He has a 5.91 acre parcel which fronts on Lincoln Street. His house is numbered 3 Lincoln Street. His sideline runs all the way back 1,000 feet to the rear, which is a direct abut to us. So because his lot is so oversized, he was easily able to give up a 32,000 square foot parcel A to the rear of his property, which abuts our property. We added that on to the 49,000 square feet. We had the total of 82,347 square feet. We backed that off by a small amount of wetland, which we also purchased from the Rodeers, and that gave us an upland area of 82,752 square feet, which is more than the required 80,000. And this lot, we showed because it's a bit more complicated in terms of creating the or calculating the lot shape factor, we showed that in crosshatch lines on the plan. It calculates 16.98, and that's well below the 22 maximum amount for lot shape factor. So this lot also conforms to zoning, but only because we're able to add to it a parcel A, which increased the flood size. If you have any questions.
So just to confirm, the section marked former orchard lot was a separate lot, and Lots 1A and 2A were one lot. And then that additional piece that runs all the way up and makes a little bit of a dogleg there was the piece that was purchased. But the only lot line that would remain is in between the two main sections. If I'm looking at the plan facing right side up to the left of the crosshatch section and extending downward, correct?
That is correct.
Hey, I actually understood. Okay. So with that, I will defer to other members of the board if they have questions about this A and R plan.
Would you just clarify again the purpose of the crosshatch? That's 2A runs all the way down, so 2A is not limited to the crosshatching.
No, no, it's not. We're required to create what's referred to as a lot shape factor in Norton, and it has to be based on half of the minimum lot area. The max, the lot area is 80,000, so we have to set aside 40,000 to calculate that lot shape factor. That's, that 40,000 is represented by the crosshatched area.
Okay. Now, have you purchased that lot already?
We have an agreement.
Okay. Now, I noticed you mentioned that you do have permission from the owner of that lot. Do you or we have something in writing from that owner that?
We have a, we have a purchase and sale agreement. We could, we can make it available to you.
I don't know, Paul, is there something we need from the owner just so we have it for the record?
Well, the owner signed the application because they're a part of this proceeding. We couldn't do it without them. They own part of the land.
Okay, I saw the application and see the signature. They signed it.
We were sure to do that because we want to show up on your doorstep with a, showing a piece of land we don't have control.
Good plan. Thank you.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions? Paul, I think you had noted that, Paul Giuseppi, sorry, not Paul, from the applicant. Yes. One of the things that we generally like to see on A and R plans is just to note that by endorsing the A and R, we are not certifying that something is, complies with zoning and is a buildable lot. So if we, Paul Giuseppi, if we could potentially just get him that wording, and that's something that could be incorporated into the final documentation.
Okay, I'll go ahead and email it to Paul. It's just that one sentence that we would just want to add to the plan.
That's no problem.
Yeah.
Do any other members of the board have any questions about what's going on with these pieces of land? Or otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Joe, all the move that we endorse the A and R, subject to the change on the Mylar.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion.
Second, Ben.
Thank you, Steve, for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go to the members. Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. The A and R is endorsed. Paul, once we have the final Mylar, just so you're aware, during the pandemic, Norton has approved a single signer for, on behalf of the board, which is myself. So when you get the Mylar back and there's only one signature on it, that's not an issue.
Okay, as long as the registry recognizes that, we have no problem.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you for your help this evening.
Thank you very much.
In your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, now I'm going to make sure I'm going to the next point in the agenda, but it looks like I am. The next point in the agenda is the review of findings and conditions and execution of decision for Reman Special Permit 46 and 491, 60 West Main Street. I think we've all kind of gone through this a little bit ad nauseam, but Paul, if you want to just kind of summarize the document, the specific documents that we have in front of us today in terms of what's in the folder and just in terms of we are looking to approve everything again, just in one clean sweep with all of the conditions and everything noted, correct?
Correct. And I just want to add to, in consultation with town council, she suggested just treating both of these like new decisions. So that's what we brought forward, all the conditions from the past site plan decision. And she also suggested that even though you've already voted on the two special permit application or applications that you had previously did not grant, she just felt it would be best to just vote again on the other two that you had already approved. And the applicant actually agreed to that as well. So essentially, we're looking at just creating two new applicants, two new decisions.
Okay, so again, we have the, these are in the 60 West Main Street decision subfolder, and then we have a final site plan approval and a final special permit approval. Is that correct, Paul?
Yes.
Those are the two documents?
Correct.
Okay. Have the members had a chance to give these documents a final look through and make sure that everything that we had noted in our previous discussions was incorporated?
Paul, on the special permit, we don't incorporate the conditions. There's the whole, there's no conditions listed in this special permit other than the new ones.
Well, we didn't have any from the last one, so it's the site plan that has the majority of the, of the conditions.
We didn't have it because it was a denied decision, but don't we need those decisions to standard conditions?
No, no, the standard conditions can go into the site plan approval.
Then, don't they need it in the special permit? Don't they have to be recorded? There's no limitations on it? Aren't all those conditions?
No, we wouldn't be, that would be, that would be a duplication, so we haven't done that as a past practice.
The original ones we filed had, had conditions in both.
No, no, the special permit did not.
Well, because it was denied.
Special permit did not have conditions in it.
Because it was denied, we didn't list the conditions.
Right, so you didn't have conditions.
So now you have, you want to put all, all of those three special permits without any conditions?
It's tied to the site plan.
Well, no, it's a separate document.
But it's, well, it's tied to the site plan. I mean, it comes with the two separate, it comes with the two, two separate decisions. It wouldn't be treated separately, especially at the, at the back end when we're, when we're using it to work with the applicant to construct it, where, that we will have both, we, you know, they have to ensure that both decisions are on site, and I make sure that all of our staff has both, have both decisions to, to operate by.
The site plan, well, right now, there are two decisions that stand, actually, the site, the special permit has three plans, three special permits to it that would be, I would think would need the special, the conditions that we had, that we had listed.
Didn't have any in the first one, Orin. There were no conditions in your first special permit.
Denied, and that's why we didn't have any conditions.
Right, and you didn't have any. You never had any. They just went into the site plan.
I would suggest that we should be having conditions tied to the special permit.
Orin, if you like, I believe the, the original special permit decision is also listed in the folder. And just to, I'm going to open it right now, and we do not have any listed in that as well. So it.
It was a combined, there was a combined decision, I thought. It wasn't a special decision. The special and the site plan was a combined in one decision?
No.
There are two different documents.
Separated.
Right, and there was none because it was denied. That's, that's my, that's my recollection. We were talking about conditions, and then I believe Amy suggested that because we were denying it, we'd have to put conditions on it. That's why. But I believe this thing has, should be recorded, and right now we have even the standing conditions, there's no requirement that it be recorded.
This is Joe. And we may have to worry that the sun may not rise tomorrow because I'm going to agree with Orin. We didn't, obviously, we didn't put special, any conditions on the special permit originally because it was denied. And I think any special permit has to have conditions on it. There are conditions. I appreciate the fact that there are conditions on the site plan, but the site plan really has, there are separate documents, separate governance documents. To me, the site plan, a special permit has to have conditions. Is that, is this something that Amy had suggested, Paul?
She did not go over this as she has with others. So this doesn't have her, her stuff, her approval on it.
And I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right document. I'm looking at something that's dated 1/20/2021.
Yes.
It is a 1/20/2021 and a 1/21/2021.
I think that's.
One is the special permit, one is the site plan.
Right.
Okay.
If it's the general conditions, that's easy enough to move those over.
Which essentially states this needs to be filed, this needs to.
Yeah.
Et cetera. Are there any? I mean, I think it, to your point, Paul, it is a bit redundant to include all of the conditions again, but in terms of standard conditions, in terms of this must be posted, this, or this must be submitted, et cetera, et cetera. I think that there's obviously no harm in that. Is there anything further that we would want to see that isn't kind of just burning a tree? There is one, there is one note in the, the site plan prior to construction number eight, which I believe we talked about during the last discussion, but, which does still need an action on. Not to get us too off track at the, at the point we were discussing, but.
Yeah, I would suggest that some of these things, I haven't gone through them, but certainly as, as they relate to the maintenance and the continuation of, of some kind of work they have to do with the underground tanks and things like that, I don't know the site plan if the appropriate place or limit it to that. I thought it would be, it would be appropriate to maintain that in the special permit, especially because that's where it's being approved. We're approving these underground tanks, and I would like to make sure that those requirements are specifically spelled out as conditions in those areas where we're putting in underground tanks. And one other thing, there's, I think the site plan references a new update, it's new updated plans. There's a special permit, doesn't seem to pick up those plans as well. I mean, referencing it, I think there's some February 21 plans, there are new plans you have in the site plan approval that don't seem to be picked up in the special permit. So I want to make sure we're looking up the same plans.
But Orin is correct, I did not carry over the, the plans. But again, if you want that, I can easily copy and paste that over.
Yeah, it'd be good to have the, the reference there, especially because it references the landscaping and the additions that were made. So again, as, as we said, we have one packet covering everything, I think. Let's see. Yeah.
Okay, I've copied it over.
Thank you. Excuse me. In terms of the carryover of conditions from the site plan to the special permit.
I mean, other than paper, is there a real problem with just pulling those over? What are the limitations of, that's fine. But just leave them within that same document, just bring them over? That's what I had sent, submitted when I first submitted back to you, and that, I thought that's what you wanted, Paul, when you asked me to do them. So I don't know the downside, really, just putting those within the site plan, the special permit. You've got to change the word because sometimes a special permit, the site plan's a special permit. But that's what I had sent before. I highlighted the things that you're going to take out, that's fine. But at least, you know, it's covered and it's there, and for my sake, I'm much more comfortable saying it in both places and going to pick out what's there and what shouldn't be there.
I mean, if the board wants me to just copy and paste all the conditions from the site plan to the special permit, I'll do it. It's not a problem, but it's, and it's just redundant, and that's fine. And it's easy enough for me to do it if that's, you know, if that's what you all want to do.
Again, I'm going back and forth, and I may have been confused, but, you know, there are conditions in terms of hours of operation and the like that has nothing to do with the site plan.
Right.
It's a, it's a condition of the special permit. It's.
Under the site plan provisions is where you have an ability to raise, is, I think, I believe it's identified as one of the things that you can, that you can include as a condition, but again, if.
And then if you only have to appear in one place, then I think it's more appropriate there under the special permit. We're, we're authorizing an operation. That's, you know, what's the bill, to me, the site plan is more the construction of You know, once the build, to me, the site plan is more the construction of the building, the layout of the building, uh. You know, setbacks and all that other stuff, which obviously doesn't change. Uh, whereas things like hours of operation and the rest belong under a special permit. I mean, the belt and suspenders, putting them in both locations doesn't hurt, but if they only have to be in one place. I think it makes more sense to put them on the special permit, but. I think, and putting them in both locations does no harm, other than using up a little more paper. Although on the sheets.
A- actually, the language we adopted last week, where we incorporated the conditions right into the site plan. The site plan language says, it says we're, we've attached the prior decision. And incorporated the findings, the decisions, and the conditions, so the conditions are technically in that document already. To the extent you have new, new conditions, or you wanna amend it to take out section eight, that's fine, just amend it. Saying the site plan, basically, the language says it's there, incorporates those prior decisions. And then you can just add what else we've decided to add and take out as an amendment, I, I think that's the way you originally structured it. You structured the site plan, it's just amending it when you first sent it out. And that's fine, so my sense would be, if you had to put it in one place, I'd put it in the, the special permit. And then just allude to the things you're changing as amending that site plan approval, or however you wanna deal with it in the, in the site plan.
I, I think just, because Orin, I'm actually not quite fully understanding it, and maybe it's brain fog, but. I'm all for simplicity, I mean, if it, if, if we just copy and paste it over. Cause remember too, for the end user, which will be me, it'll be Nick, Jen. I'd rather be looking at one document versus two, you know, so I mean, if we put hours of operation in one and not the other. That creates more opportunity for a mistake down the road. You know, so, um. I'm gonna get my brains, I don't know why my brain's in a fog this evening, but, uh.
When we copy it over, just, because sometimes the, the word site plan is used as opposed to special permit.
Yeah.
When you copy it over, you may need to change it in a couple of places and so on.
Right, oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think part of this may be just from the procedure of. At town council's suggestion, just to having fresh everything, and when we backed that out and kind of tried to un. Unmake the, uh, unmake the cakes of, so to speak, uh, couldn't quite get the, all the flour and eggs separated, so. And my analogy has unraveled completely. So I think we're all in relative agreement to, uh, copy the conditions. Completely from, into both documents, which makes it, uh. Kind of no confusion, uh, we do still have that single action. Under, on the site plan document. Uh, on page four, which is prior to construction, condition number eight, which was in regard to the surety. Because there's already things set up at the state level, um, to deal with this. That was something that, uh, the applicant had cited as something that they would like to potentially see removed. The members of the board have a strong feeling one way or the other.
Again, this is Joe, I, I think it's, um, it's unnecessary because it's something that's covered at the state level.
Okay. Depending how, depending whether members have a specific way that they would like to speak on this, I think. Joe, you've made your, your, your point clear, um, I would just look for a motion on that specific point.
I'll move the, the, uh, item eight, the, uh, removed.
This is Scott, I'll second.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion, and Scott for the second, is there any further discussions by members of the board? Hearing none, I will go, starting with Julie.
Yes.
And you've moved on me, so I apologize, Orin?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Attend, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
As long as we're removing things, item number six, trucks will, uh, use West Main Street. Means it's not fatal, but how else are they gonna get to the site? And they can't go through residential, I mean, they can only use West Main Street, so.
That is true, um, I believe that is a. A standard, a somewhat standard condition that we include in most decisions in terms of how they should enter and exit the site. I can only imagine the abutters to the rear of the property would be, would be thankful that we have that in there. I obviously don't have a, an issue removing it, but, uh, if we want to tell trucks they shouldn't go off-roading, then, uh. I'm sure they can figure that out.
We've had a cou- a couple of situations with other sites where trucks have been going into the neighborhood and. Uh, town managers have asked me, what is the, what is the decision saying, you know, the, he can point to the language to the, to the operator and. Tell them, you know, tell your trucks to stay away from those areas.
I guess in this case, they could potentially go into the school or something like that if they. Uh, there's a fence there, but.
Again, no big deal, I just thought it was. Helicopter, yeah.
Yeah, well, it says, it says construction trucks, so helicopters are exempt from that portion of the decision, so. Um, okay, so I think that was the only specific action item. That we had related to these two documents.
Tim, just, just real quick, on, on the site plan. Number, on page five, number five is, is highlighted, is that, is that something for review under. Prior to final occupancy regarding the, the variance?
Oh, I, I, Julie, I, I highlighted it just as wondering if that first sentence necessary, because now they have. The freestanding sign is shown on, uh, on the site plan. Um, it, it's probably fine if, if we wanted to keep it in there, but, um, it might be clearer just to say that the sign. Shall not, you know, shown on the plan shall not have an overall height of more than twelve feet.
Right, because it doesn't match the variance granted by the zoning board of appeals, right? We, we chose a height that is less than what the variance was, so I think we do need to rework that in some way, shape, or form. Or else Joe's gonna get a supersized sign, which I know he doesn't want.
Well, uh, the sign itself would still require a variance even as designed now, correct?
No.
No?
No. It's less than it now.
What number was that you were talking about?
It's, um, number five, under, I think it was prior to, it looks like, well.
Prior to final occupancy.
Yeah.
Page, page number five in the PDF in the site plan document, okay.
So it's, it's highlighted yellow.
Yeah, I, when I reread it this afternoon, I saw that, and just thought that. That might make that, this a little more complicated than it needs to be.
I think they're at cross purposes, because what this, I really found it out, with CBA, it allows is different from what we agreed to.
Right, and I think if we just deleted that first sentence and just left the second sentence, that's, that's fine.
Okay, I don't have any. Opposition to that, uh. If somebody would like to make a, uh, a motion to that effect. As I asked for a motion for the previous change.
Okay, since I brought it up, I'll make a motion to strike the first sentence in number five under prior to final occupancy.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe, for the second, is there any further discussions from members of the board? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, so we're striking the first line of that item. Um, and I believe that should be all of the notes that were highlighted in these documents, uh, since we've already addressed the other comment about inserting conditions. So with that, uh, our remaining items would be action on the documents as a whole. Including the changes that we have discussed tonight, as well as the, um. The decision to include the conditions, uh, the full set of conditions in both the site plan and special permit. To ensure that, uh, that is cleared to anybody with either document.
All, this is Joe, I'll move that we approve, uh, the special permit, uh, with the revisions we've made tonight.
Okay, thank you, Joe, for the motion.
Yeah, could I just get clarification, because there's, um, you have this, the two remaining. Are, are you voting just on the conditions at this point, or, and then come back for the two remaining special permit, um, votes?
Are you, so you're saying we, you, we would do a, a vote on the conditions themselves? And then a motion to approve the doc, the final decid- special permit decision and site plan decision?
Uh, you, you could go that route, uh, I just wanna make sure, you know, because we've already, you've already voted for the special permit. Uh, to allow gas station and village commercial, and then for the electronic message center, and we just have. The, uh, uh, the special permit for fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet in the water resource protection district. As well as, uh, gas station in zone three.
Right. So. What I had intended to lead toward was. Two sets of approvals, one on the. Since we've already, is, made the vote on the. Projects, we are approving. This as the final document decisions with the changes we've noted. Is that different than the procedural steps that you understood we should take from Amy, Paul?
Oh, you're correct.
Okay. Um, so this. Was in turn, Joe, you had motions to, for the special permit document, correct?
Correct, which addresses all four special permits.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that that is consistent with what Amy was looking for. Is it, Paul?
Well, she, she just suggested, you already had voted on two, she just suggested voting on the other two. The two that you had approved, uh, during the original hearing.
So we, so the two that we voted to approve were. The gasoline station and electronic message center, is that what you're saying, Paul?
Yes.
So we need to do fresh motions on the special permit relief for. The, any use of tremors impervious, renders impervious more than fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot, whichever is greater within the water resource protection district. One, and then two, the gas station with underground gas and diesel storage in zone three of the water resource protection district.
Correct.
All right, for clarity purposes, let me, uh, um, rescind my original motion.
Thank you, Joe.
Did anyone second it?
Steve did.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll rescind it.
Okay.
All right, I move that we approve that special permit. Necessary for any use which renders impervious more than fifteen percent. Or twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot, whichever is greater within the water resources protection district. Norton's zoning by law article fourteen point five, point B, parentheses, six, C. After parentheses.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Steve, for the second, is there any further discussion on that specific motion?
Um, Kevin, I'm sorry, is that the one, the impervious one, I'm sorry, I missed it.
This is the impervious can, special permit relief, yes.
Are, are the conditions we talked about gonna be applying to all of these? Other than these two?
Yes, the conditions are being applied to all of the special permit and all of the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Absent any further discussion, I will start with the members and start with Julie.
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So the next special permit relief that town council has recommended we vote on is the. Relief for gas station with underground gas and diesel storage in zone three of the water resource protection district. According to Norton by law. Fourteen with sections noted.
I move that we approve that portion of the special permit.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion, and Steve for the second, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Julie, you're up first.
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, so that should check those two boxes from Amy. And Paul, continuing that train of thought, we would now have the. Two final, we are approving these documents votes, or do you feel the vote done already is sufficient for what Amy was looking for?
You're fine on the special permit, you just need to vote on the site plan.
Okay. I'm just gonna stare at my webcam here, so.
Uh, this is Joe, I'll move that we approve the site plan. As we have dated one twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
That also incorporates the edits that we've made this evening. Okay, and Steve with the, with the second, is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll go to the members once again, Julie?
Yes.
Orin?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. So Paul, unless I'm missing something, we have now completed our actions remaining on this agenda item?
Correct.
Okay. Moving along, uh, the next item listed on the agenda, which is special permit seventy-six ninety-four, three twelfth Ton Avenue. We will not be taking any testimony on this special permit at this time. Uh, there was a noticing issue due to a failure on the Sun Chronicles Park. So we are looking to continue this application to March the ninth.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, Scott, for the. Motion, and Julie for the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will start with you, Julie?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Special permit seventy-six ninety-four, three twelfth Ton Avenue will be heard on March ninth.
But, uh, again, if the applicant has requested, if any of you have any comments, just get them to me and we can get it to them, so, if you can.
Yeah, uh, this was a. As Paul, uh, vented to me at one point, the request for the noticing was submitted well. request for the noticing was submitted well ahead of time, and the Sun Chronicle simply failed to publish it, which also happened to two zoning notices as well, so it's, uh, I'm sure that's fun.
Uh, and especially since we're getting close to your first public hearing on the three different zoning bylaw changes for town meeting, these continuances are stacking up.
Yes. Yes, so if we have any comments on that special permit, we can please provide them to Paul, who can pass them on to the applicant. The next item on the agenda is special permit sixty-nine fifty-six, which is two twenty-seven East Main Street. Paul, I don't see that one noted as looking for a continuance, but I don't see anybody here from Condyne here.
Oh, it should, I should have been on the agenda. But they have requested it.
Okay.
Is it not, oh.
Just after.
Okay, but they've requested, uh, they did this uh, yesterday or today, my apologies, but they're, they're requesting a continuance to the ninth.
Understood.
Motion to continue to the ninth.
Scott, Julie. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Scott for the second. Scott, sorry for jumping all over you there. Is there any further discussion from members of the board? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. The final item on our agenda, which has been continued any number, I'm not even going to count the number of times, which is zero, rear Eddie Street. Uh, this applicant is also seeking continuance to March ninth. Of note, which I think Paul made everybody aware of earlier today, we did receive a letter from a counsel for and a butter, which I think we should all review. Paul, I'm not sure if Amy has seen that yet, but since it does deal.
We just got it late this afternoon.
But since it does deal with specific case law, I think that would be something that might be something that should be reviewed on her end.
Right, and a couple things she's actually addressed already.
Yeah. That's fine, but in terms of, if, uh, if an butter's lawyer is saying something, I would prefer another lawyer to tell them they are right or wrong, rather than having me turn into an armchair lawyer.
Right.
Which I am certainly not. But absent that, uh, they are also seeking continuance to March ninth. Paul, it's the ninth, also when we have our first public hearing on the warrant articles, or is that the following meeting?
The following meeting.
Okay. So I think our goal in March ninth should be to take care of as many of these items as feasibly possible, so we are not carrying that into, uh, second March meeting. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that, or everybody kind of agree with that, that viewpoint?
Yes, agreed, Tim.
Okey-dokey. Other than that, we're looking to continue to March ninth.
Motion to continue to March ninth.
I'll second.
Thank you, Orin, for the motion, and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. In closing, Paul, I pitched this to you at the beginning of the meeting, and you said you'd address things at the end in terms of anything else that you wanted to share with the board?
Yeah, um, first, um, you know, the, the election, uh, the paperwork was due, um, uh, earlier this week, I believe. Um, nobody submitted, so we will be at one, at some point, uh, down two of you. But at that point, what would happen, I believe, is the select board would appoint to fill the vacancies, so.
Paul, it's a joint meeting between the selectmen and planning board.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, if we can get that, uh, maybe start the groundwork on getting that teed up sooner rather than later. Since if the board is down two members, um, that leaves us quote-unquote no margin for error in terms of approving a special permit, which requires a super majority. So we don't want to get into a situation where simply being short, or being short a member, that doesn't allow us to make a decision if somebody happens to, uh, become ill or can't make it to a meeting for whatever reason.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with the town manager to get that going.
Yeah.
Uh, if I could, uh, um, I couldn't commit to another three years. So I wasn't gonna, I mean, for a variety of reasons, gonna run for a full term. I didn't realize that, Orin, you weren't gonna run. I'm a little concerned that, that these, you know, the, what is it, three, uh, currently outstanding special permits, now either gonna have to get the unanimous decision, or they're gonna start all over. And I'd be willing to do one year. And I'm saying this to the planning board half of the appointment process. Uh, I'd be willing to do one year, uh, which is what would happen if, if someone is appointed to fill a vacancy, that person serves until the next election. That is obviously if people would want me appointed, but, uh, I did realize that Orin wasn't.
Thank, thank you, Joe. Uh, I think you've, you have signaled fairly openly that you are looking to, uh, to wind down here over the past several years, so it's, uh, understandable, and thank you for, um, thank you for saying that. Everybody makes their own decisions. And I'm not gonna hold any back for their own decisions for whatever reasons they have, so that's fine. Paul, was there anything else that you wanted to say in terms of the, um, things happening with the board? I know there was a, um, some updates on, um, one past decision that came back from Superior Court, I forget which court.
Right, Superior Court on the Farland Farms, but you all have that. Uh, it's, you, you, if you've read that, um, they, you know, this was primarily the, the one dealing with the, uh, the petitioners, the butters, and, um, you know, not going through all of it, but most of their issues were dismissed. The, the substantive, I think the more substantive one is in terms of with the board was they, they, um, this, the court disagreed with, uh, the, with the, uh, with the board on regarding the, the special permit issue, that, um, they felt that the specific special permit criteria versus the more general should have been the way to go. So obviously, we'll need to get Amy in to talk more about this. I know there's another hearing coming up to discuss the remaining issue of the batteries. The court didn't weigh in on that, uh, last week. And then there's still some outstanding issues, because the applicant also appealed the site plan. So that has to be, you know, has to be weighed by the courts as well, so there's still, still a road to go with that.
All right. So at some point, we'll speak to Amy about that in a little bit more detail. Thank you for the, the summary there. Um, is there anything else, anyone, um, other than you, Paul? I'm not sure if you have anything else, but anything else other people would like to want to share with the board, uh, before we sign off for the evening?
Paul, can I, can I just ask one quick question? If you could just give us an idea what the three zoning by law changes are for town meeting, just so we can be slightly prepped on what topics they're on, that would be helpful.
Yep, actually, one you've already seen, uh, there's the proposal to rezone the Mastop property on, uh, on one night, on four ninety-five and one twenty-three, from residential eighty to industrial. Um, so that's coming. Uh, there's actually another, uh, there's a, two small parcels, uh, right next to Red Mill. It's on, uh, White Drive. There are two vacant parcels that are zone, uh, residential eighty, and they're seeking to change, the, the property owner is seeking to change that to, uh, commercial. Uh, and then there are, if you're obviously aware, you were very heavily involved with the development of the marijuana by law. There's a couple of tweaks that need to be made. Uh, definition, definition changes for allowing delivery services, and then, um, we realized uh, one of the, uh, requirements that we have in the current draft, uh, current version says that we can't issue a bill, a, a building permit until all, all state and local approvals are completed. The problem with that is the very last step that the Cannabis Control Commission has, uh, their very last approval is a walkthrough of the building. So they actually get the final say, so we had to revise the language to allow, uh, once the site plan is, site plan and special permit is approved, that they could then move forward with getting building permits.
No, they have to meet both those conditions simultaneously.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that not gonna happen, so, uh.
Okay. Paul, if we have information on those, uh, I'm not sure if there's an easy way to put that in a separate Dropbox folder. Um, so whatever materials we do have, we can take an advanced look at, um, if we so choose.
So Paul, just.
Julie, Julie, you're now gonna be held accountable for everything and all of those documents, since you asked to see them earlier.
I know, I know. Don't hold me to it. Unless it's sixth grade math, I'm out, I'm kidding. Um, so for, for those, I'm assuming Paul only, or, or is only one of those three, for lack of a better term, Rs on the, on the town meeting.
Um, yeah, it is.
Responsibility matrix. I'm assuming it's just the, the lot that we're talking about with Mastop. The other two sound like they came in through signature, and then the last one with marijuana is staying with, um, economic development.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, we'd have to make it clear, we, you know, we will make it clear that it's Mastop that's doing this, but we're forwarding it on their behalf, so, you know, we're in process of getting the signs made, um, and, and, you know, we're, we're, the notices are, we're needing to get those ready, so the signs need to be in the ground by Tuesday.
Oh, okay, wow.
Yeah, well, you know, it didn't pass, so, um, that's what we're still stuck with, so good luck, you know, signing.
Paul, is it just the Mastop property, or is it also the town property that's adjacent to it as well?
It's just, uh, for the, the zoning by law change, it's just the Mastop property, because the town property is actually that little, there's a little sliver right at Leonard Street. It's actually that zone commercial, so it's part of that commercial district there. So, um, and there's some language, I need to see this, this is dealing with some sort of, I, I, there's some, there's a proposal dealing with that property there. It, I think it has more to do with granting access, but, um, you, it won't be something that you all have to vote on, but there is an article dealing with that little piece.
Just, uh, let me know what I have to testify to at town meeting as well, so that's, uh.
Yeah, but that, that'll be it.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I want to mention, we, we, we did receive a grant, uh, it's a consultant grant, uh, to, it, it's what, it's called the Local Rapid Recovery Grant, and it's from, from the Commonwealth, uh, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, and it's there to help, um, businesses who've been hurt by COVID. And, um, we're going to look at some segment of, of West Main Street, certainly the Village Center, um, maybe all the way out to, you know, out toward, uh, Home Play. But it'll, it'll help design a quick plan to help with marketing, communication, and outdoor, outdoor spaces in this area to help us get, you know, better, uh, better prepared to help these businesses, help promote their businesses. Um, so we should be, I'll be working with the EDC, but it's possible, uh, you know, once we get a consultant on board, that you all will have a role to play in it, possibly. I mean, there's nothing, you know, there won't be anything development review related, but it may be something that you're of interest in, uh.
If there's a link for, I don't, you said you're working on identifying the area, if there's a way that we can share on the town planning social channels and potentially get shared further. Um, I don't know if there's a way for local businesses to reach out as part of this program or not, but.
Yeah, that's, we're waiting to hear from the consultant, so I was told just to sit tight until we hear from them. Uh, but that's gonna be, uh, so I've been doing some background work, just, you know, collecting information on the businesses in this corridor, um, you know, trying to find, you know, not, you know, addresses and obviously all of that, and we do not have a comprehensive listing of businesses, and it's, you know, that's a big goal of mine, is to get to be much better prepared than we were when COVID hit, to be able to reach out to businesses and provide them with helpful information. And, you know, as part of my job too, you know, I'm spending a lot more time on the economic development from now. Um, scaling back on ZBA, uh, except they still have another forty B ready to go, so that's now going forward, but um, and I should point out, the, the forty B next to McDonald's has been approved, I'm just waiting on signatures on a decision, on the decision, which that one alone will put us over the ten percent threshold, um, or get close to it, but then when this other one goes uh, forward, it will definitely put us over.
Okay.
So, um, but I'm spending a lot more time trying to work with businesses, working with the EDC, doing a, a whole host of, uh, actions related to helping businesses, you know, get information out with all the different, um, grants and loans that are out there, and training sessions that are going on, I'm just trying to build up, build up a, a, a database of, of emails for people, for businesses, and also pass that information along to them.
Yeah, so when the path forward with that grant is available, and you've shared, just when you've shared it on the the planning board or planning department's Facebook page, or whatever it is, if you could just shoot a note to, uh, the members, so we know if we want to amplify that on our own, we can do that.
Absolutely.
I assume the, um, the select board would probably want to do the same, so.
Uh, I hope, I hope many boards want to, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
This, and then, um, I, I also need to mention, March thirty-first will be the next, um, master plan meeting, and it'll be focusing on mobility and services. So we want you there, it'll be a Zoom event, and I think it'll be like the last one, where we'll have online information for about two weeks, but we're getting close to that. And I think the importance of all of these activities is it gives us a chance now to work better with partners, you know, business community, other, all other stakeholders, to help implement these actions that we're, these plans that we're developing. Um, you know, obviously, we don't have the resources to do it all in-house, and it doesn't make the least bit of sense of that word. If we, even if we did, we need help from everybody, but I think this would be a great opportunity for different boards to, you know, to, you know, participate, and then with different stakeholders to help focus on specific activities to help, you know, make a plan rate real.
Okay. Thank you, Paul, it's good to, good stuff to know. Is there anything else anybody would like to, uh, share with the board related to, uh, what we're working on? Um, otherwise. Um, otherwise, um, I would look for a speci- a very specific motion.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, for the motion, Julie for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Orrin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time this evening. We will see you at our next meeting on March ninth.
Good night, everybody!
The recording has stopped.
Can I don't learn in the game, can I call it? I'm gonna, I'll get that, the, uh, the two dr- uh, the two decisions to you, uh, tomorrow morning.
Okay, yeah, I can, um, I'll print them out and sign them. And I could probably drop them off either tomorrow or, uh, you know, the next day, Thursday, what's, what's that, Thursday?
Uh, I think so, yeah.
Today's Tuesday.
I know, Tim, but let's, let's, we'll just circle right back around to where we started.
Yeah.
Yeah, shoot them on over to me, Paul, when you're ready, and I'll send them and get them, get it back to you. Okay?
I'll have Tim take a quick look at them, and that, not quick, however long he wants to take with it, but I'll make the changes, I'll add the conditions. And then, I'll get that to you first thing.
Alright, not a problem.
Everyone, have a great evening.
Alright, bye guys.